August 5th, 2021, City County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. And Ms. Ramsey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Drane?
Here.
Commissioner Gay? Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Ma'am. You have the minutes that were mailed to you and at your desk today, there are a corrected, two corrected, number one, and there be election of officers. There's a typo and you can, well, you can read it in section B. You don't need me to read it. And then on the back page, which was under number eight, Commissioner Ritchie returned to the chamber. So are there any corrections, questions regarding the minutes of July the 15th, 2021? Thank you.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Monica. We have now Hamp, do you have anything to record in the comp plan or zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir. Mr. Warren, I request that you order that the record include all statutory and regulatory provisions governing tonight's proceedings, also the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and finally, the qualifications of each staff witness. In addition, I request that you administer the oath to each of those witnesses.
Thank you, Hamp. Do you all swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. There in our packets tonight, there's no subdivision or site development plans. There is no old business, so we move into our public hearing. Our first docket item tonight will be heard together. There are two separate motions, one for a zone change, and then if that passes, a second for a requested variance. 2021 45Z County, James Stephen, Martha Jane, and Marie Mosley have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 3.39 acres located at 1550 and 1624 Highland Church Road from Ag to RE with a general development plan. Should that pass, the second would be 2021 v. 17, James Stephen, Martha Jane, and Marie Mosley have filed an application for a waiver on the property located at 1550 and 1624 Highland Church Road. This property is currently zoned Ag. So Mr. Jones, you will make our presentation.
Thank you very much, Chair Warren. All right. We got a pre-app on June 29th for the property you see outlined in yellow. The applicants are proposing to rezone 3.39 acres located at 1550 and 1624 Highland Church Road, apartment A, from agriculture to RE residential estate in order to divide the property into two single-family residential tracts. The existing zoning is Ag and the existing land use is single-family residential, and the future land use is also agriculture. However, because the property is a non-conforming agricultural parcel that is less than five acres in size and only one new lot is being created, no flume amendment is being required tonight. If you'll flip to page two of your staff report, you'll see the future land use map category, and you can look then afterwards to the site characteristics review. Under the natural features, I will highlight that there is a wooded area that contains several mature trees located at the rear portion of the property. Under site design and compatibility review, surrounding density within a quarter of a mile densities range from zero to 0.96 dwelling units per acre. The median is 0.03 with an average of 0.18. Within half a mile, densities range the same from zero to 0.96 with a median of zero and an average of 0.12. The proposed density here for these two lots is 0.59. In the surrounding area, homes in the area are mainly one-story, ranging from 864 to 3,300 square feet with a median home size of 1,700 or so. Building materials have a mix of brick, Masonite siding, stone, vinyl, and wood. About half the foundations in the area are brick or stone, with the remaining half a mix of plain face block, split face block, and poured concrete. If you'll flip onto the next page, we have nothing for area-specific policy review, but we've got your development plan conditions listed accordingly. Maximum number of lots shall not exceed two. Any new residents constructed shall include at least 1,500 square feet of heated and cooled living space exclusive of garages and porches. I'll let the applicants touch on a little bit more, but I will highlight that it's any new and that they're not proposing to tear down the existing residence. Number three, any new residents will have an exterior of vinyl siding, brick, stone, concrete siding, LP smart siding, or other modern masonry materials. Plain and split face block are permitted only for building foundations and not as primary facade materials. Number four has to do with the facade facing Highland Church Road. Number five has to do with the septic systems and that if their homes ever are replaced, that the Barren River Health Department will inspect the current systems or issue a permit for new ones. Number six deals with any modification to the existing access being coordinated with KYTC. Number seven is that existing mature vegetation shall be preserved to the greatest extent feasible, with exceptions for building envelopes and driveways. Flip to your focus 2030 category review. Staff identified 14 items, nine of which may comply, or excuse me, nine of which comply, five of which are up to the planning commission's determination. Well, let me, I'll go back to the waiver, I guess, first, but the reference for issuing a waiver is listed on the next page of your staff report and the waiver findings as well. The applicants here are requesting a waiver to allow an existing carport and detached garage shop to remain in front of the existing residential structures. You can note it on the site plan. The shop on the top tract just barely pokes out in front of the front facade, which is kind of angled towards Highland Church Road, which is the reason they're requesting the waiver. In order to address the findings necessary for granting a waiver, the applicant submitted the following narrative. The location of the existing structures are not proposed to change. The only thing proposed to change is the subdivision of the land, so the external appearance of the site will remain the same. Therefore, the proposed waiver will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity. There are also a couple of properties in the vicinity that have accessory structures in front of the primary residence. If the waiver is not approved, the strict application of the regulations would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land because the existing structures have been located on the property for over 10 years, would have to be torn down or relocated. This would create an unnecessary hardship on the applicant instead of allowing the structure to remain as is. And like I mentioned before, 14 items, nine of which comply, five of which are up to the planning commission's determination. If you flip back to the front page, we'll go over the points to consider. The proposed development is exempt from flume, the flume and compliance with agriculture future land use category because the property is a non-conforming agricultural parcel that is less than five acres in size, and only one additional single-family lot is being created. The proposed development complies with the majority of the review for site design and site characteristics, with exceptions regarding road width and water availability. And then the proposed development further meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance except for an existing carport and detached garage shop that are proposed to remain in front of the existing residential structures that are located on the property. The applicants have requested a waiver to grant relief from this requirement, and the planning commission should determine, should further determine if the argument provided by the applicant addresses the findings required to grant a waiver, and the planning commission should determine the proposed development is compatible with the area. That's all I've got for the staff report. The applicants are here as well, but I'm answering any questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones?
Zach, this may be a question for the applicant. It appears that we're not building a new structure here. Do we know what the purpose is of subdividing the property?
Yes, and I'll let the applicants touch on it more, but basically, they want to split the residence and then the shop on the top tract that you see on your attached exhibit off of the residence and proposed, or excuse me, accessory structure on the bottom tract just purely for, well, I'll let them touch on exactly why, but just trying to split those things up.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions, commissioners? Or the applicants are here, would you all like to make a statement, please? Either one of you? If you come to the microphone, please, sir, we swear you in. Your name and address, please?
James Stephen Mosley, 1624 Highland Church Road.
Mr. Mosley, swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mosley, a couple of questions, if I may. Go ahead and tell me, so it appears that we're not proposing to build a new structure, yet you want to subdivide it. What is the primary reason for?
Basically, my dad gave, my mom and dad gave me the three acres that you see outlined, and I built my home there. And now that we built the shop and everything there, so we're just wanting to get it in our name to ease up on my mom, to take more care of it, and just for the future, basically.
And in the development plan conditions, I want to ask you about one of them, if I could. It says that plain and split face block are permitted only for building foundations and not the primary facade. Would you be agreeable to state that if a new structure is built there, that it would have a brick foundation? It would not affect the existing structure?
Absolutely.
All right. And it appears that the new, on that auxiliary building, it just, one of those structures just barely is passed?
Yes, sir. Basically, it's the fire shop we put a lean to on it to put my dad's pontoon and both his boats on there at that time, and so it protrudes out just a little beyond the other one.
No other questions for me. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mosley?
I do. I want to make sure I understand the discussion you had with Mr. Graham about the foundations.
Yes, sir.
Do I understand correctly that the intention is that the existing foundations will remain as they are?
Yes, sir.
But if a new structure is built on the premises, either one of the lots, then you will agree that the foundation will have a brick veneer?
Yes, sir.
Over the block?
Yes, sir.
Or other structure? So now let me, we're looking at development plan condition number three, and it says, "Any new residents constructed on the property will have an exterior of vinyl siding, brick, stone, concrete-based siding, LP smart siding, or other modern masonry materials." That, of course, will stay as it is. Plain and split-faced block, that's hard to say. Plain and split-faced block are permitted for existing building foundations and not as a primary facade material. And then we're going to add a sentence, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mosley. "Any new home constructed on the property will have a foundation that has a brick veneer."
Yes, sir.
And you agree with that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you. Sorry to be so long-winded.
Oh, that's okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Mosley? Thank you, Hamp. Is there anyone in opposition to this zone, to the rezoning and/or the waiver on the property? Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Now, we'll call for a motion, please. The first motion would be the rezoning of the land.
Motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number 2021 45Z County, based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance objectives and actions items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion for zoning is approved. Now, we'll call for a second motion on the waiver.
Make a motion to approve the request for a waiver at 1550 Highland Church Road and 1624 Highland Church Road, apartment A, docket number 2021 v. 17, a waiver to allow the existing garage shop and carport to remain in the front of the principal structures. The testimony presented in the public hearing has shown that the granting of this waiver will not adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, and will not alter the essential character and general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or a nuisance to the public, and will not allow unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of zoning regulations. I further find that the waiver will not violate a comprehensive plan. The extent of the waiver of the regulation is a minimum necessary to afford relief to the applicant in either. The applicant has incorporated other design measures that exceed the minimums of the district and compensate for noncompliance with the requirements to be waived. The requested waiver arises from special circumstances, which do not generally apply to land in general and vicinity or the same zone. The strict application of the provision of the regulation would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land and would create an unnecessary hardship on the applicant.
Second. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
The two motions are approved, and Greg, thank you for trying to read through that.
It was hard to read.
Next item tonight is item number three, docket 2021 46Z BG. Bishop Land Sales LLC has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 5.202 acres located Zero Nashville Road, located adjacent to Logistics Court, and approximately 2.27 miles from McClellan Road, excuse me, from highway business to light industrial with a general development plan. Mr. Jones?
Sir, thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-app on June 15th for the property you see outlined in yellow. The applicants are proposing to rezone 5.02 acres from highway business to light industrial in order to develop the property for a warehouse facility with corresponding parking and loading areas. The existing zoning is highway business. The existing land use is agriculture, and the future land use is mixed-use commercial, which is listed as a potentially compatible zone in the mixed-use commercial flume designation. If you'll move on to page two, we've got the considerations for that category in the future land use map. Under the site characteristics review, I can go over anything you guys want, but I will draw a little bit of attention to natural features, that there are not many natural features noted on the property, but there are sinkholes known in the area, though not on the property specifically. And under floodplain and wetlands, there are no known floodplains located on the property, although there are known drainage issues in the area, and there is a wetland, I think, on the property adjacent to the west or southwest. Site development plan was approved for mask grading in 2020 to include the drainage area depicted on the aerial map, which I can go back to briefly. You can kind of see it there in the corner. However, the applicants indicated a stat that they plan to reconfigure the basin in order to accommodate the building that is depicted on the attached site plan, which will kind of skinny the basin out and pull it along that southwestern property line. Under site design and compatibility review, there are a mixture of low and moderate density residential uses in the area. The nearby brownstone development has a density of 5.4 dwelling units per acre. In the surrounding land uses, there's a mix of industrial and commercial uses with several agriculture uses across Nashville Road, as well as the aforementioned residential uses in the area with several vacant tracts in the vicinity. There are a mixture of one- and two-story commercial, industrial, single-family residential, and multifamily residential structures. The proposed light industrial zone allows buildings up 100 feet in height. DPCs for other LI parcels on Logistics Court that were done in 2019 require that, excuse me, limit building height to a maximum of 75 feet. Staff suggested that the applicants address building height as part of the application, but no information was submitted regarding this topic. Under building materials review, you'll see that the majority of structures in the area are metal with other modern masonry materials mixed in. The DPC for the adjacent LI properties require that all facades be constructed of at least 60% brick, stone, precast concrete, fiber cement board, or architectural metal panels. Plain face block is prohibited, and the applicants agreed to generally the same materials requirements in development condition three, which we'll touch on in a minute. Under the traffic impact study portion, the TIS was not required by KYTC and Bowling Green Public Works in lieu of the following requirements. KYTC requested there be no direct access permitted to Nashville Road, and Bowling Green Public Works requested that there shall be 115 feet spacing requirement from the intersection with Nashville Road for any access points to Logistics Court, and the applicants agreed to those requirements in DPC seven. And on that note, we'll go through the DPCs. Number one regards the protection and use of sinkholes on the property. Number two has to deal with utility location, which will be underground. Number three has to do with the building materials, which we mentioned a minute ago, but I'll go back through that because they do vary just slightly. 60% brick, stone, precast concrete, fiber cement board, or architectural metal panels with concealed fasteners, and plain face block shall be prohibited at above finish grade. Number four has to do with orientation, and all buildings on the property shall be oriented to face Logistics Court and Nashville Road. Number five limits freestanding signage to be monument style with a height no greater than 15 feet. Number six deals with prohibited uses, which include bar lounge, manufactured and mobile home sales, bingo parlor, tattoo parlor, adult entertainment, sale of alcoholic beverages, or sale or display of pornography or adult books. And number seven has to do with the access that we mentioned a minute ago. Under the focus 2030 category review, staff identified 13 items, six of which comply, and seven of which are up to your determination. And if we can flip back to page one, we'll go over the points to consider. The proposal is consistent with the flume and mixed-use commercial category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and the majority of the review criteria for site design, with exceptions noted regarding building height, and compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. That's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, Zach. Mr. Pardue, are you representing the applicant?
I am. Chairman Warren. Ted Pardue, 1010 College Street. I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Warrens. Good to see you all. I am representing Bishop Land Sales LLC. With me tonight is James Bishop. James and his wife Judy are ostensibly Bishop Land Sales LLC. This is a request that, well, let me say, most of what I would have to say about it have already been covered by Zach. Let me mention just a couple of things in anticipation of any questions. This is Mr. Bishop's development currently. There is no user presently lined up. We hope that'll change fairly soon if the commission is so inclined to grant the request. The DPCs, we made an attempt, with an exception or two, to try to mirror those of the light industrial properties that were rezoned a couple of years ago on Logistics Court, again, attempting to maintain some consistency and some compatibility between those and Mr. Bishop's property. The only other thing I wanted to mention, and Zach already covered it, is the drainage basin. It's my understanding from the engineer, the plan is to redesign that. As you'll see it in the concept plan, the volume won't change, the configuration of the basin will. Aside from that, if there are any questions from the members of the commission, I'll be glad to take those now.
And Ted, you know, we do this every other Thursday, so you're well aware of this, but just for the record, I think you've stated it on the record already, your client is aware that in the reconfiguration process, they will have to adhere to the restrictions of the engineers in order to reconfigure that basin, and they're fully prepared to do that, correct?
Absolutely. Yes, they are, Commissioner. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pardue? Thank you, Ted.
DPC number three. Building materials for facade shall be at least 60% brick, stone, precast concrete, fiber cement board, architectural metal panels with concealed fasteners. What's the other 40% going to be, and is it limited?
What it's going to be, I can't answer. I could possibly see some type of glass or other material, but it is not limited. And as it relates to that condition, again, the intent was to mirror, if not impose, a condition on building materials that was the same as those light industrial tracks that surround it. You know, as far as what the material might be, you know, I guess it's open to anything that's, I guess, that is appropriate for a warehouse-type structure. I guess what I sort of envisioned about it was a glass or some type of material like that. I don't think anything that you might see typically on a residential structure would be appropriate on a light industrial structure. But we're, yeah, we can consider tweaking that if the commission is so inclined.
Thank you, Hamp. Any other questions for Mr. Pardue? Thank you, Ted. Is there anyone in the audience in opposition to this request? Hearing now, we'll call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number 2021 46Z BG, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the focused 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The motion is approved. New business, is there any new business for tonight?
Old business, I believe Ben has a item for tonight.
Yeah, so just a quick item for discussion. Most of you will remember, we had an application for a gaming facility on Kenbale Boulevard several weeks ago. That was for an amendment to the development plan, which was denied.
Is there anyone in the audience in opposition to this request? Hearing now, we'll call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-one forty-six ZBG, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bytally?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The motion is approved. New business, is there any new business for tonight? Old business, I believe Ben has a has a item for tonight?
Yeah, so just a quick item for for discussion. Most of you will remember, we had an application for a gaming facility on Kenbale Boulevard several weeks ago. That was for an amendment to the development plan, which was denied, and we have had the subsequent request to rehear that. Currently, both the KRS statute, but also our local zoning ordinance prohibits rehearing applications within a one-year timeframe, and so I had I had denied that I had denied that request. Subsequent conversations, I guess, have led to this discussion tonight. Why I'm bringing it up is if, I guess, to make a long story short, I would ask the planning commission if they would be willing to rehear hear that application prior to that one-year rest period, if you will, for the zoning ordinance. The only I I'm okay with whatever the planning commission wants to do, I'll state that, but I will, I guess, just bring up concern about a possible precedent setting if every application that we deny immediately wants to come back when when nothing's changed. I guess that would be my my only concern, but I agreed to ask if you all would consider rehearing that, and so that's that's, I guess, what I'm doing tonight. We don't necessarily have to have, I guess, any kind of decision or not really asking for a vote on it, but maybe just to get your your feelings on that and so I can report back what the what that may be.
Did make change?
I the way only way I know how to put it is, from my perspective, they did they have not made any changes that they didn't can make concessions for that that evening at that hearing.
So this is only my personal opinion, but in my view, that opens a Pandora's Box. We, you know, it's unfortunate that it was it didn't go the way they wanted it to go, but if we do this, we're going to be, I mean, we're going to we're going to hear twenty a night if if because they're just going to come up here, ask us, if we say no, they're going to walk back in the door the next Thursday and say, hey, let's try again. And it just does us no good. There's a reason for having that quiet period, and I would encourage the commission to enforce that.
Maybe, but it's nothing that I've been made aware of.
And there are other avenues that they could go to Bowling Green City Commission or fiscal court?
Oh, development plan amendment is final action by planning commission only. There's no nothing that the city commission can can do to change the voluntary development plan conditions or at that time binding elements that were self-imposed by that developer on that property.
Do you have the right to appeal your decision to the Warren Circuit Court?
Forty days has probably already it has run.
You were asking, correct, Greg?
Yes.
Is so they have that period for them to appeal has passed. That's why they're coming back to you. I see. Okay.
And then they aware of they they some type of substantial change to their application? They don't have to wait one year? Yes, they've been made aware of that.
I don't want it to read, you know, it's it's made some significant changes, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
So they are aware that if they made a significant enough change, they could resubmit. They have not made that that they have not complied with that requirement.
To my knowledge, no, nor have I been presented with any kind of change at all, much less a substantial change.
Okay. So, yeah, much as I hate it, in my view, we're opening a Pandora's Box if we accept that.
I agree with Mr. Graham. It also impacts has an impact on the commission's integrity also if we look at doing something like that. I mean, setting a precedence opens the door wide open for similar projects, and we start doing that, we're we're facing a lot of criticism, in my opinion.
That I would ask, and I did. On a lighter note, yeah, on a lighter note and to the the point made by Mr. Graham earlier, I'll just say we are on pace to break all of our activity records this year. Twenty seventeen was our previous high year, so if things keep going as they are, we're we're going to have a record year, and it's been a great year, so. Next meeting, I believe, we've only got two. And again, we're not trying to do this on purpose, but it seems like all of our full board meetings are seem to be getting packed. It is, but they're not that's not really what it is. Everybody seems to just be waiting for those. It's a little early to tell, but I think we are thinking just two flume changes, but total items we're anticipating at this time is closer to six, but that deadline's still quite a ways out to know for sure. So I think we'll just have to see how that goes and kind of gauge why that's the case